I'd like to call the August meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jimmy Rogers to lead us in the invocation, immediately followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please rise.
Let's pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, and supreme Architect, we pray, Lord, that you guide and direct this board, that we make the decisions that are in the best interest of children, the best interest of education. And, Lord, we pray that you guide and direct us, and you guide and direct the staff and the students, as we all begin the new school year. Within the next couple of weeks, Lord, the schools will be filled with joy, filled with smiles, filled with laughter, and filled with learning. And, Lord, we pray that you be with each and every one of those students, each and every one of those teachers, each and every one of our staff members, our custodians, our cafeteria workers, our bus drivers. Be with Haywood County Schools, Lord, that we can have a great start, a good year, and be one of the greatest school systems in this state and in this country. And, Lord, we know that we cannot do any of this without you. And we pray, Lord, that you use your guidance upon us as we do our daily adventures with you. Lord, we thank you for everything that you've given us, and praise your name, and we give you the glory and the praise for everything we do in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under announcements, just to let you know, the next regular board meeting will be here at the Education Center on September the fourteenth at 7:00 PM. And at that time, I'd also like to announce that we're going to have a public hearing on policy ninety-one twenty-five for public input, and Mr. Shepherd has agreed to give us just a little brief synopsis about the wheres and whys and what fours about policy number ninety-one twenty-five.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
The policy ninety-one twenty-five, participation by minority businesses in construction contracts. Basically, the general General Assembly's statute that that policy follows states that we have to have, basically announce that we're going to have a meeting and just have a time for public discussion on that policy. So that's what we'll be accomplishing with this announcement tonight. We'll have that public hearing next week, and we'll just open the floor for a time for people to make comments on that policy as they see fit.
Okay. That'll be on September the fourteenth at 7:00 PM here, right prior to the board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you.
Also, we have some other announcements that we need to make. I know Mr. Rogers wanted, Jimmy Rogers wanted to make an announcement, he's asked to speak.
First of all, I'd like to thank everyone for their prayers and support on my diagnosis here with my battle with this cancer, and thank you, everything will be good, and I want to thank everyone for that and the support. Second thing I wanted to mention, I know we've had, I've had some comments in the past about the school zones, and the lights are flashing all during the summer throughout school zones. With us getting ready to start a new school year, I'm wanting to, with a little help there, to make sure that the public is well aware that we are back in school session, and please be cautious going through the school zones now. Those flashing lights are meaningful, once again, during this school time, and so we can have a good, safe start to school, and hope the public will adhere to the laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Shandible has asked to say something.
I failed to mention to any of the board members who want to ride in the Kent Labor Day Parade, let me know, so I'll know what kind of vehicle to get and how many to get. So if you'll just let me know, I would greatly appreciate that.
And I assume that's on Labor Day?
Yes, yes. And I will, what is it?
Good time you can.
Oh, yes, yes. And the date would be September seventh. Yes, September the seventh. And I'll arrange everything and give us a number.
You just gotta show up, smile, and enjoy the ride.
Exactly.
Or what?
Bring some candy.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Ms. Milner, did you have an announcement that you wanted to make about being going out?
On behalf of the foundation, remember the bingo on August the twenty-ninth. That's always a great fundraiser.
Be sure and buy a ticket.
Get tickets.
It's always a good cause, and it's a lot of fun.
Lot of fun.
Lot of fun.
Dr. Nolte never wins, but he does.
But I always attend.
He always gets there, yeah.
You can't win if you don't play.
That's right.
That's what they always tell me about the lottery. I always complain about not winning the lottery, but I don't ever play.
Can't win if you're not in.
That's right.
Can't win if you're not in.
It's good to come, it's a comment. Any other announcements from anyone? Okay, under agenda adjustments, we do have one item that we need to add at the request of the Building and Grounds Committee. I think Mr. Leatherwood said they had one item, so we will bring that up right after Mark Shepherd and the policies before the Finance Committee. We'll just slip the Building and Grounds in there. And if I forget, please, I know you won't let me forget it, just remind me, because I do forget many times, as I've proven many times over, but I try not to. Now, I'd like to recognize Dr. Ann Garrett for some special recognitions.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, it's truly an honor to recognize two of our employees tonight for their leadership skills, not only in Haywood County and not in the region, but throughout the state. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mrs. Bessie Paris, who is an employee of ours at Central Haywood High School. Ms. Bessie? And we went down on, excuse me, on June twenty-fifth to actually join in with this celebration. It was an honor to see her onstage to represent Region Eight. Haywood County Schools Board of Education Certificate of Recognition is hereby granted to Bessie Paris in recognition of her position as direct, excuse me, District Eight Director for School Nutrition Association of North Carolina. Congratulations. And you can see, we had quite a few people there. The next award is going to be given to Mrs. Allison Francis. And Mrs. Francis was not only awarded this leadership role, not for the county, not for the region, but as a state president. And as far as I know, this is the first time that this has ever happened in Haywood County, so we're very proud of Mrs. Francis. Haywood County Schools Board of Education Certificate of Recognition is hereby granted to Allison Francis in recognition of her position as President of the School Nutrition Association of North Carolina. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our folks in child nutrition, you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you for representing us at the state level. I know you'll do great. Dr. Ann Garrett's back up?
Yes, and I am really excited about sharing this information with you. I've thought for the last several weeks or so, you know, how much money do our seniors actually are they eligible to receive in scholarships? So went back and did a five-year study on this. I had lots of help, Teresa Cook Testing Coordinator helped, State Department helped, because evidently this information is not in any kind of report that's given, so we actually had to do some digging on this. But I did want to share with you scholarship eligibility. This is not a hundred percent accurate, because if you'll notice, the last couple of weeks in the newspaper, we've had several of our students who have received like forty thousand dollar scholarships from state employees and others. But I would like to show you for the last five years how our seniors did, what kind of scholarships they were eligible to receive, and then do a cumulative total on that. So you can see in two thousand and eleven, Tuscola had two hundred and fifteen seniors. Those seniors were eligible to receive over six million dollars in scholarships. Pisgah had two hundred and eleven seniors, and they were eligible to receive over two million dollars. Central Haywood, seventeen, and they were eligible to receive five thousand five hundred. Early College, fifteen, with three thousand. And then you'll see the year in two thousand and twelve. You also note in two thousand and eleven, that was a total scholarship eligibility for eight million four hundred thirty thousand five hundred. Two thousand and twelve, you had Tuscola with two hundred and six, over two million scholarships. Pisgah, two hundred and thirty-four, almost three million dollars. Central Haywood, twenty-five seniors with five thousand five hundred. And then you had the Early College with seventeen seniors and seven thousand dollars, for a total of five million two hundred fourteen thousand seventy-five. Two thousand and thirteen, you'll see Tuscola with two thousand, excuse me, two hundred and twenty-four, over three million dollars eligibility and scholarships. Pisgah, two hundred and twenty-three, eligibility, one million four hundred forty-one thousand. Central Haywood, nineteen seniors, eligibility of three thousand six hundred. And then the Early College, twenty-four, with eligibility of five hundred, for a total of four million four hundred sixty-seven, eight hundred and eighty-six dollars. Two thousand and fourteen, you'll see we had two hundred and twenty seniors at Tuscola with almost three million dollars scholarship eligibility. Pisgah, two hundred and twenty-seven, with over two and a half million eligibility. Central Haywood, thirteen, with four thousand dollars recipient. Haywood Early College, twenty-five, with seven thousand dollars. So you'll see five million four hundred fifty-six, six hundred and three. This past year was a really nice year. Tuscola had a hundred and ninety-eight seniors for scholarship eligibility of three million four hundred thousand. Pisgah was two hundred and twenty-four, with over four million eligibility. Central Haywood was eighteen, with five thousand five hundred. Early College was sixteen, with three thousand five hundred, for a total of almost, well, seven million six hundred and two thousand. And if you look at those over a five-year timeframe, from two thousand and eleven to two thousand and fifteen, we had two thousand three hundred and seventy-one seniors, and these students were eligible to receive thirty-one million one hundred seventy-one thousand four hundred and sixty-two dollars in scholarships. So we were very proud of them. Questions or concerns?
Glad to see it's coming back up.
It is.
Coming back up. Anyone have any questions, comments? Congratulations to all the seniors.
Absolutely.
Let's get y'all. Okay, Dr. Ann, you're back up again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, I would like to share with you Haywood County Schools, our organizational chart. You'll see our citizens of Haywood County, they elect our Board of Education. You select your superintendent, associate superintendent, principal, and then school staff. Okay, under my division, you'll see some of the things that I have responsibility for. Brooke King is my assistant, and then Charlotte Rogers is their receptionist. Under those, these are the people that I directly supervise, Dr. Nolte with curriculum, Jason Hines in HR, Tracy Hargrove, Director of Maintenance, Angie Gardner, Finance Officer, Jenny Wood, Foundation Director, Allison Francis, Child Nutrition, and Rick Stiles. And then you'll see listed under those people, you'll have the administrative assistants, and you'll see their direct responsibilities. Now, we have had a few changes in, under the HR, Lara Feinberg is new to the HR department. We did some changing around of some of their positions. Any questions on page two? If you look on page three, you'll have Dr. Nolte, and you'll see his responsibilities that he has. You'll also see the people that he supervises, which would be Ms. Barker in Title One, Mr. Moss, Dr. Douglas, Joan Ferrara, Randy Stevenson, Alicia Glantz, Todd Trantham, Mark Shepherd, and Kyle Lepford. And then you'll see their responsibilities that they have. You'll also see that Jill Barker is now working with Lara Feinberg. You'll also note that there's a change in Ron Moss and Carol Douglas. Their administrative assistance is Elaine Connor, or, excuse me, Elaine Kleiner, and then the others stayed the same. If you'll look at page four, the Finance Department, we had a change in this as well. Angie Gardner's our Finance Officer, and you'll see her direct responsibilities. Leanna Moody is the Assistant Finance Officer. Rhonda Hargrove is payroll clerk. Amanda Robinson is payroll clerk as well. And then new to that department full-time is Jennifer Welch, who has accounts payable. Haywood Community Learning Center, you'll see Kyle Lepford is their director for that. You'll see his responsibilities noted. Caroline Williamson is the Twenty-First Century Coordinator, and then Karen McCracken is his administrative assistant. Child Nutrition, Allison Francis is our Child Nutrition Director. Her assistant is, or secretary is Sheila McClure. Candy Metford is the Child Nutrition Supervisor. Mary Ann Schoeffe is the bookkeeper. And then you'll see our school cafeteria managers and assistant managers, and then our workers as well. Transportation, Rick Stiles is our Director of Transportation. He also does driver's education. Gloria Green is his cost clerk. Mary Jo Reese is our TMS operator. And then you have your bus drivers, driver's education, and then our mechanics. For our ITC, Todd Trantham is our Director of Technology. He also has several other responsibilities. Nathan Haas is his administrative assistant. He has numerous responsibilities. Kim Jackson is the Media Instructional Technology. Teresa Cook does testing and also staff development. And then we have our technicians. And then for Support Services, we have Tracy Hargrove, who's Director of Maintenance and Custodians. Kristy Keener is his office assistant. Mary Jo Reese is also assigned to him on a part-time basis. And then you have Custodians and Maintenance Department. Questions or concerns?
Takes a lot of folks around the system.
It does.
But we do a great job.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions, comments? Ms. King, did anyone sign up to address the board in public session? Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at the July thirteenth closing regular session minutes. At this time, I'd entertain a motion that be approved as presented. Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Henson, right here, second. Second, Ms. Shandible. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, we'd like to hear from Mr. Todd Trantham. He's got some information he wants to share with us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you'll turn your attention to item number ten on the agenda, it is a memorandum of agreement between you and the Macon County School Board for a Network Engineering Position that we've had in place since two thousand and ten. So this is just a continuation of that agreement, but it is up, and we are asking for a one-year continuation of it. And that's probably what you're going to see from now on, because of some of the other boards and the requests that they've made, is that that be an annual agreement that we just bring before you each year to have taken place. So I'll take any questions you have at this time about it.
You said this started in two thousand and?
We started this in two thousand and ten. There's five districts now that are involved, Haywood, Jackson, Macon, Swain, and Cherokee Counties.
Any board members have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, at this time, I would like to enter a motion that we have this memorandum of agreement approved.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers, second of Ms. Milner. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Trantham. Now, we have our policies, and they're starting to come back in with a vengeance, looks like, from Mr. Shepherd. There's a lot of them coming our way, aren't there?
Yeah, there's quite a few more. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, tonight for first reading, we have the nine thousand series along with just sixty-four forty-one from the six thousand series, which is also included in the nine thousand series, but these are just for first rate tonight.
Okay. Anyone have a question for Mr. Shepherd or for Mr. Shepherd? We will table the listed policies until the next regular board meeting for public input. They will be listed on our website, so you can, the public can take a look at them. And any comments? I'm sure we'll be glad to listen.
The nine-one-two-five will also be listed on that same place for public to look at and make comments.
Okay, the one we have in the public hearing about.
Right.
Okay. So we'll table the listed policies, plus ninety-one twenty-five. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd. Now, we have Building and Grounds from Mr. Leatherwood.
Mr. Chairman, we've got a project up at Tuscola High School. It's to install a metal building out next to the missionary classroom. It's actually to do away with all the dust and stuff that's caused us a lot of problems with motors there in the finance system, I believe it is. But we'd like to give Tracy the permission to put up, it's a thirty-six by twenty-four building, at a cost of eleven thousand four hundred seventy-two dollars. And Building and Grounds would like to make this form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from the Building and Grounds Committee from Mr. Leatherwood. Second. Right here, second of Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have our regular monthly financial reports, and Ms. Milner is substituting for Mr. Francis tonight. And I failed to mention this in the announcements, I'm sorry. Mr. Jim Harley Francis is on vacation, family vacation, and Mr. Kirk Patrick had a family matter that he was, nothing wrong, just he was not going to be here tonight. So I failed to mention that, and I apologize. But now, you have the Finance Committee report, Ms. Milner.
Well, earlier, we had our finance meeting, and Ms. Angie Gardner, our Finance Officer, presented all the financial reports, and everything was very much in order. And so I would like to make the motion to approve our monthly financial reports.
We have a motion from Ms. Milner to approve the monthly financial reports, right here, second. Second of Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we need to bring up anything else under child nutrition?
No, please.
We both felt another issue.
Okay.
Nelson, you want to explain something? We didn't have another thing on that.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, through USDA, we are required by law that what it costs us to produce a meal, we must charge at least that much for our adult meal price, because we don't get any reimbursement from USDA. And based on last year's figures, it currently costs us three dollars and seventy cents to produce a lunch, and we've been charging three dollars and fifty cents. So I'm recommending that we increase that to three dollars and seventy-five cents, so we have a little bit of leeway. And also increasing breakfast from a dollar seventy-five to a dollar eighty-five to cover the increase at breakfast. In the past, it happened, this has happened once before, and the local budget has to cover the difference between what's charged and what should have been charged. So we need to increase that price to cover that, so the local budget won't have to take care of that.
And this came from the Finance Committee also passed, does the Finance Committee, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right.
So I make the motion that we approve this.
We have a motion from Ms. Milner to approve the increase of the adult meal cost for lunch and for breakfast.
Yes, sir.
As presented. We have a second from Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion?
Make sure that the adults do get adult portions with their whole plate.
That's based, it's based on the child, the student portion. Actually, children are supposed to have more calories than the adults, so. But they do get four fruit and vegetable choices, and the children don't have that many. So they do get additional side items, but it is the same portion sizes.
Any other questions or comments? I know if we don't do this, we get in trouble with our elders, so we'll end up paying them away the others. We hate to do that, but anyway, any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Francis.
Come visit. Where else can you go in the county for three seventy-five and get a meat, four sides, piece of bread, and a drink? I'm just saying.
That is a good deal. Next on our agenda, we have our personnel presented by Dr. Ann Garrett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have fifteen separation from employments. You have twenty-nine employment status changes. You have five leave of absences. And then for your approval, you have twenty employments. You have thirty-nine employment status changes, one leave of absence, twenty-two contracted services, nine substitutes, five employee coaches, nine non-employee coaches, two volunteer coaches, and four teacher contract renewals.
This time, we entertain a motion of personnel. Mr. Leatherwood's made a motion to approve the personnel as presented, right here, second.
Second.
Second of Ms. Milner, I believe she just found a mill a second.
She just found a mill a second.
A Milner second. Anyway, are there any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Dr. Ann.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Greg Bailey, Principal at Pisgah High School, to introduce Pisgah's new Assistant Principal.
I've eaten too many adult portions, I could use a few child portions. Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, it's my pleasure truly to present to you a young man tonight that I feel like's really going to make our county better in every way, going to make Pisgah High School stronger. It's going to be a great addition for our families, and that's our primary customers, our children and their families, and then our teachers. So when I go to sit down to pick someone to bring onboard, I take it quite seriously, as I'm sure you appreciate. And I tell a lot of folks, even when I'm interviewing them, you don't see any moms and dads in here today. They're counting on me and you to get that right for the sake of their children. So I think, I feel like we've hit a home run. And this, we're only as good as the people that we surround ourselves with. They'll make us, or they'll break us. And we're bringing one onboard tonight that's definitely going to help us reach that next level, and I look forward to seeing his career grow. He has great potential, and I fully expect to see him with his own school one day, better be right here in Haywood County, right? But many of you know this young man, I realize, and even better than I, I'd say. But when I had so many people that I trust greatly, that have never come forward to me before, suddenly beating my door down, telling me about this young man, I wanted to sit down and meet with him. Called him that afternoon. He came in that afternoon, and we, I don't know, six-thirty, seven PM, stayed in there. From the get-go, I could tell that this was someone we wanted to work with our kids and with our teachers, and be a part of our team at Pisgah High School. So I know he has a passion for Haywood County, and that was very important as well. This is where he wanted to be, strong, and I could feel it. And so, without further ado, I want to introduce to you, and a young man I'm excited about, Pisgah High School's new Assistant Principal, Jacob Shelton.
All right. Chairman, members of the board, I just want to say it's a privilege and a pleasure to be able to serve the county in which I'm a product of. Born and raised Jonathan Valley, where she was my principal. Wayne's Middle School in Tuscola, class of two thousand and four. Haywood County Haywood County's home. I've never had a desire to do anything but serve this county and it really excites me to, to start at Pisgah High School and, and get to work. So, thank y'all.
Good behavior.
Jacob, Jacob, congratulations. And with your pedigree, you're going to have to change colors around your house.
I got red.
I know. I got you.
I said, "Son, you start out in the hole." And I just wanted you to know. You poured it out real quick while I married a bear. And I said, "You're good to go." Got his master's degree from Clemson, so I said, "Both of them are birds."
The house that was divided is now brought together, so.
There are many of us who are what we call Piscolians. And it's a, it's a good thing we're all in this together.
That's right. We're glad to have you and thank you for joining the Haywood County team. Thank you, Jacob. Any other comments, questions before we adjourn? If not, meeting adjourned.